Pastor Deanna Shaw has volunteered to do that for us. So if you come forward.
Okay.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah. Father, we thank you for this evening. Of course, number one, the beautiful weather you've given us, Father. We think that everybody's gathered here tonight and maybe go over the things that we need to talk about tonight in civil language and everybody get along good. And we know that everything that this council does is for the betterment of Perry. And Father, we just thank you for this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, amen. Here's Bob. Well, that's how about this.
Did Bob say he was coming?
We'll call a meeting to order now at seven o'clock and ask you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, could you take roll call, please?
Mayor Hammond?
Here.
Larry Lambert?
Here.
Mike Kinnon?
Bob Porter?
Here.
Chad Fuller?
Here.
Jacob Huffer?
Here.
Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move that the agenda be adopted this morning.
Sir.
We have a motion from Chad, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I'm here.
And reading an approval of our minutes of the previous meeting. And I think Larry Lambert has a correction there. Is that right there?
Correct. I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes for the April 18th, 2024 regular meeting with a completion of reading at the end of page one and the top of page two, which would include adding on the bottom of page one, the third day of the garage serial yard sale will be the 19th. At the beginning of the next page should say citywide cleanup.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Jacob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any preapproved reports this evening? I don't see that we need one. Public comment, is there anyone here for public comment? Yes, come right ahead. Please introduce yourself because not everybody on this.
I was recognizing anybody here. I recognize more people out there than you here. My name is Greg Wecor. I'm at 209 Kenny Street, Perry, Michigan. I was on the city council from 2006 to 2018. So I feel like this, that portion right here, you're like, you know, what you're going through, I'll be upfront. Big decisions, not always easy to make. But think again with your heart and your head, with your heart and head too, some of the things best you like. I'll mention, I, you know, when I look at my taxes going up, things like that, that's, you know, not easy. Now, I'll explain a couple of things if I can in detail. Then I'm gonna mention a person here that probably deserves service. I personally would not be alive, I mentioned that in your purse, I personally would not be alive today for a gentleman called Anthony DeLucia. And I want you to write that name down. That gentleman, on November, first week of November, I went outside on the ramp outside my home and I got real dizzy. I was sweating and my heart was pounding. I called my mom, my Perry ambulance service. I'll tell you, we got the best service in Chautauqua County, maybe the state of Michigan. They were there within five minutes. Now Anthony checked me out, told me, hey, you gotta go, you gotta go. Well, I didn't want to go because my wife, and you know, like she was familiar with my cases so surely, my wife's had three strokes and I pretty much, pretty much take care of her. Especially with situations where you gotta do, be up front to diapers, things like that. So I was thinking about something, nope, nope. But luckily, my next door neighbor, and this is where, you know, gotta give your neighbors a lot of credit and things like that here. My next door neighbor says, Greg, are you okay? I says, no. So my next door neighbor's wife was also there that day. She took care of my wife for six days while I was in the hospital. I had a pacemaker put in, two weeks later. Or two days, two days later, I was transferred over, went from Owasso, transferred over to Sparrow. And in between that time there, I had a second relapse and I thought that was it. And if not for Anthony telling me to go, I probably wouldn't be here today. And that's, I tell you, the response here from Perry ambulance is fantastic. And I continue with Perry ambulance because we had another situation. And Shirley's aware of this one here too. We lost power in our house, the wiring. And again, somebody up there must like me, I don't know why, but somebody up there must like me. Because we had Consumers Power come and said, you were very lucky that the house fire did not start. They told us to basically get out of the house, you had to cut all the wires, stuff like that. It was power circuit break, you know, circuit breaker and things like that. Don't get into detail. So basically Red Cross and again, this person right here, Anthony DeLucia, came that night, put a generator for my, from the house, because there was no way I could have my wife stay overnight. She's very susceptible to colds and things like that. Even I had to have a cold, it was cold that night. He brought a generator. Red Cross took us over to the motel over here in Perry. And again, the service again is tremendous. So we may have things we may not agree or disagree on, but I tell you, the service here from Perry ambulance is probably top notch. And I, you know, if you need a spokesperson or whatever, I'll tell you, you know, they're the best thing. But the main thing, and basically, I've had outside help and I've had a company, company's name, but had a company help me as far as taking my wife's diapers, things like that. It's not been easy. She's pretty much bedridden, so it's kinda hard. But again, I've had, again, neighbors, again, as far as my niece from Powellville come and help as well too. So again, very, very blessed in that aspect as well too. But the final thing I want to say, especially here, is listen to people. If they do not want their taxes higher, there's a reason why. Look at what our, you know, our situation is nationally. People are very much having a hard time. They're having a hard time making ends meet. I look at my Consumers Power bill, it's expensive, but water bill is there too. So people are having a hard time. So when you're making decisions on property taxes or things like that, consider, hey, we got people that are suffering out there. So I just want to put my two cents in there on that.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else here tonight for public comment? Shirley, do we have any communications tonight?
The only thing is that I handed out the email and the brochure, I guess you could call it that, from Perry County.
Do you want to speak to these two people?
Do you want me to wait or do you want me to do it now?
Wait.
To the, to the, or? I'll just do it now. Okay, I'll just do it now. Yard sales are May 17th, 18th, and 19th this year, so in a few short weeks. Waste management, we'll still have the cleanup at May 20th through the 31st. We have flyers in our office and on the website. I think they're posted down on Carls. And it gives all the details you need. You can look on our website. Did I ever say website? I'm sorry.
You can say it three or four times if you want.
Website, we have the website in our office, so there you go.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Well, by my watch, it's close enough to 7:10. We are going to jump down to our public hearing because that is posted to start at 7:10 and that's in regard to our budget and millage rate. So if there's anyone here that has questions or wants to make any comments regarding the proposed millage rate and budget for this fiscal year, Megan's here to answer all the questions you might have. Megan is our treasurer. Anyone have questions or comments? Feel free. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
I move that we move into public hearing to address the 2024-2025 budget and the city millage rate.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So we are now entering at 7:10 into our public hearing. Megan, did you have information to share with people or?
I have no changes to the budget since our last meeting, that we discussed the budget or the budget workshop. The millage was reduced by, I believe it was point nine nine two or point nine eight nine two percent. So that did roll our millage rate back about 40 cents per thousand, I believe. Minimal, and it's, it's the heavily rollback act. We have no control.
We have had budget workshop, as Megan mentioned. We have had one other public hearing in regard to the budget. And this is required, of course, by our charter. So we'll, we'll stay in this public hearing mode for a few more minutes in case anybody does think of something they want to ask. Counsel, if you have any comments? Yes, Jamie?
I just have a question for the record. What is the current millage and what is the proposed millage rate?
I have it right here. Or I dropped it if you were with me. Fantastic. Here, let you do it. Send you the extra. Is that it? Is that it?
Okay. So the current millage is right 12.6434. The new millage rate will be 12.5524. Last year's expected revenue was 740,000. This year's is about 788,000. And that can be attributed to the 5% inflation adjusted to the taxable values of all homes in the city, as well as new homes that were brought on.
That answered your question, Jamie?
It does. I just wanted to understand that because you have a reduction, it means your actual value of millage went up in the area. You're not collecting, you're not actually getting less revenue.
Right, but your, the millage rate has decreased based on taxable values. Yeah.
Thank you.
The changes were for residential.
I'm sorry, what?
The changes were for residential.
For all real property, real and personal property.
Or even businesses.
So even commercial. Yep, regardless.
Dennis was asking if it was residential, and it is, but it's also business. Answer that question. Not hearing any further discussion or questions or comments regarding the millage or the budget itself. I will now gavel us out of the public hearing and we'll go back to our regular agenda. We will not be addressing the millage rate and new budget until we've worked our way through the rest of the agenda. So now at 7:15, public hearing is closed. And we'll move into department head reports. Shall I stay? Megan, stay right there and give us your department report.
Things are moving along well for me this time of year. Things are starting to get a little bit easier as we close out the year. For the next meeting, I'll have your third quarter budget comparison. We will have amendments, suggested amendments to make, and that's related to, mostly related to tornado-related activity. The state requires that no one account have a deficit budget. You have to, it can be a planned deficit, but it can't show a deficit if it wasn't budgeted. So we'll have to adjust our budget to show the revenue and expenses coming in that were not planned for the tornado, as well as a few other minor expenses that maybe were budgeted last year but rolled over into this year and we weren't able to adjust the budget in time. So we'll make amendments this quarter to get it ready for the end of the year.
Any questions for Megan about anything? Okay, thank you, Megan. Kevin? Kevin Tyler, our superintendent of public works.
So May is here, which we're gonna be bringing our loose leaf and debris collection to an end. Be ending the end of this week. We always do one in the spring in case people missed cleanup in the fall. Then a regular chipping and lawn bag collection schedule will go into effect, which everyone has mailed a calendar in their newsletter. Just asking people to be patient while we get going on a regular schedule here for summer cleanups and brush chipping. We started mowing lawn, cutting the grass. We have a city property weekly, common areas twice a month. And soon I'll be starting to look at weed and grass complaints. It's not everybody's favorite thing, but it's what we do. So those will be going out soon. The grass started growing early this year, so we've, we've already got some people asking about it, so. Reminder that the lawn bags cannot exceed 35 pounds. They'll be tagged a month behind for that reason if they exceed 35 pounds. The brush chipping rules are available at City Hall if anybody has any questions about amounts or, or the schedule. I talked to the contractor for the brush grinding for the storm debris that's piled up, the mountain of it at the DPW yard. He's supposed to start bringing equipment in tomorrow. His equipment has had some breakdowns and he's waiting on parts. And as soon as the parts come in, we're next on his list for the brush grinding. So we'll get our two days worth of cleanup done. And he still assures me that we'll be very happy after two days of work with the amount that they're able to get, grind up and get out of here. I met with SA Mormon this morning. The project manager wanted to do an onsite walkthrough. If you all remember, they're the company we hired to do the card lock security system here at City Hall with the grant money. He wanted to do a walkthrough, make sure that the parts that they're ordering are in line with our project, so there's no holdups. They plan to start work shortly after supplies are in. So we're gonna keep that project rolling. Consumers is set to replace the, the gas service line for City Hall. This is the first step in preparation for the generator installation project, also funded by grant money. We're hoping to see them probably next week to get the underground stuff down so we can move forward with, with that project as well. I was in contact with Waste Management today regarding the community-wide cleanup and they're set to drop dumpsters off. They're gonna get them here a little early just to make sure there's no miss in timing. So they're gonna drop them off on the 13th. So the community-wide cleanup can begin on the 20th. Is there any questions or comments for me?
Thank you.
How about the bags for 50 pounds or 35 pounds?
30 pounds.
Never fly mine, but I think I never flew mine.
If they have, if they struggle, they'll try to get them if they're a little over because we don't have a scale.
I'll make sure I pay the answer better because I always throw those 50 pounds. So my apologies for that.
So we, like I said, if they can get them, they'll usually get them, but if they're too heavy, we bag them, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Shirley, do you have more for us? No? Okay. Kyle isn't here. And I don't think he left anything for us to read, did he, Shirley? I do have just one item that I would like to make sure you're all aware of, and that is concerning Kyle Locke, our city's chief. Kyle has been going to college off and on since he started working here to get his bachelor's degree, and he's graduating Saturday. So he'll be receiving his bachelor's degree in business administration, major diversity and leadership. So if you see him, please congratulate him. It's taken him a long time to get there. Do we have any committee reports for tonight?
Not really a committee report, but I'll just give an update on the planning commission. Planning commission's next meeting is coming Monday evening here in council chambers, and we will be reviewing the latest draft of the master plan that just was sent out to everyone actually earlier today. So if all goes well, we may be looking at that at our next council meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other committees? Chair? Anything? Good. Looking then for presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as we stand. They're gonna be offered.
Second.
We have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't believe we have any old business, so moving into new business, we've already had our first item, so we'll take the second item now, and that is possible approval of the city millage rate for this fiscal year.
I move that we set the city of Perry millage rate for 2024 at 12.5524.
Second.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking now for possible approval of the city's 2024-2025 budgets.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas a public hearing was held and all comments were heard regarding the proposed 2024-2025 budget of all city funds with general ledger by activity number form and all other funds by revenue and expense totals, and whereas revenue and expense totals are itemized as follows. General fund revenue, $1,655,759. General fund expenses, $1,897,798. Highway major revenue, $197,168. Highway major expenses, $294,292. Highway local revenue, $135,985. Highway local expenses, $231,482. Parks revenue, $6,710. Parks expenses, $5,000. Drug fund revenue, zero. Drug fund expenses, $185. McQueen revenue, $50. McQueen expenses, $500. Sewer fund revenue, $578,025. Sewer fund expenses, $566,085. Water fund revenue, $453,664. Water fund expenses, $483,933. City hall fund revenue, $4,065. City, city hall fund expenses, $2,700. Motor pool fund revenue, $200,000, $200,640. Motor pool fund expenses, $479,226. Office pool revenue, $28,270. Office pool expenses, $32,500. Therefore, said budget be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay. Everyone knows why, because you have to do roll call this.
Yeah. Shirley, we have to do a roll call here, please.
Jacob Huffer?
Aye.
Larry Lambert?
Aye.
Mike Kinnon?
Aye.
Chad Fuller?
Aye.
And Bob Porter?
No.
You're supposed to say yes.
It's okay.
It's okay.
I know what you mean.
Roll calls taken. We have a majority, motion pass. Moving on then in our agenda, we are to the reason that the majority of the people are in this room. And that's for a discussion about a sign recognizing the accomplishments of Harry Bradley. His family's here and his brother, William, is the spokesperson. So would you like to come forward and?
I'd like to sign.
Talk with us.
I thank you for letting me represent tonight. I thank everybody for coming. Perry accomplished something that if you do the research for the last 60 years, it's phenomenal. Five state championships. Did two his sophomore year, team championship, and then he won the shot put. His junior year, he didn't wrestle, didn't play football, still won the state championship in shot put. His senior year, he won two more state championships. And it's unbelievable. You've had eight state championships here at Perry. He's won four of them. And so it's just, you've had two ladies that have won. I just think it's phenomenal. I'd love to see his name put on the highway or maybe one of your signs already that you have, if it's gonna be real difficult. Any questions or?
Have you had any discussion with all the school system about? Because I know a lot of times they have signage up in the gyms and things.
Yes, I have. They're gonna put a case in. They've ordered it, I think, already out of Owasso, and they're gonna put a case with all the state champions. This is something that the whole country can be proud of. People driving through, kids will look up to. Can you imagine, five-time state champion? You don't see that. It's unbelievable, seriously. Just to give you an example, Dan Severn won two state championships. They call him the beast. He's a professional wrestler and everything, went on, did very well. He only won two, and then two teams. So he won four total. I mean, I'm just giving you an example, what he did was unbelievable.
Any other questions or comments for Bill? William?
I think the other question that I would have, and that is, I'm not trying to dispute if I didn't know him, but did agree that remarkable accomplishments. I'd be concerned that though they're not gonna come along every day, that if we do move forward as an organization, that we have something in place that when the next state champion, be it an individual or be it a team, that it begins to happen in perpetuity, not just.
When they get five of them, put it up.
Pardon?
When they get five of them, put it up. It will happen.
And I'll be honest with you, I'll pay for it. I don't care if it's 20 years down the road, 50 years down the road, you just gotta hold the Bradley family, somebody'll pay for it. I'm being serious. And I don't have a problem every time, and you got a good point, Larry. Every time there's a state champion, put it out here. I mean, I had to drive by twice to see the sign. I wish it was a little bit bigger, maybe turn it so people can see it. Seriously, I mean, you wanna recognize these people for what they did. They don't, they don't come along every day. They're sick for 60 years, that's all you've had. You know, it's not like it's, oh, Rockford. They, I think there's 40 or 42 state championships they've won at the school. They have a huge, I mean, it's huge. And so if it gets that big, you know, I'm willing to pay for it. I don't care who it is, doesn't have to be my brother.
You provided a lot of background information. What would you like to see done in terms of sign, location-wise, and what exactly?
You've got a great one as you're coming into town. It's actually inside town there. You've got a sign on there already. I don't know if you want to use that, or just somewhere where it's close in town, you know, so people, as they're driving through, they can see it. You know, they could be from Moores or Owasso or from wherever. They're coming through and a lot of people don't know that he was a state champion, you know.
Do you specifically want it on the southern? We certainly get a lot more drop-in traffic on the north end of town because of the.
Wherever you guys live.
Gas stations and.
You guys live around that.
Fast food places.
So are you doing both ends?
Yeah, both ends.
Yeah.
We can ask. And I was telling Bill this, you care if I call you Bill? I. I was telling him this earlier. Even if council approves doing this, we still have to talk to MDOT because we are not in charge of M52. Anything that goes there has to be approved by them. So we could ask that, and I see that you put this sign in your packet.
The reason why I did that, and I need to interrupt you. The reason why I did that, I wanted you to see how clear it is. You see, and how, you can tell when you're coming into Everett, Michigan. You see the guy's name? He's two-time, it's just, you notice it. I mean, here I had a hard time seeing it. I had to go buy it twice because it's so small. I'll pay for those new signs if you want, because I want people to see it. I want people to notice it, because they deserve their attention.
I have, thinking about what Larry said, I've seen signs where, when there are others to be recognized in the future, they just add another sign on down the row. As long as it's able to be read, would that be acceptable to do that type of a sign?
Very much.
Don't we have a sign in one end or the other that says state champion or something? Not champion, but Perry, whatever, softball or something?
It's so small, you really have to look, seriously. If you drive by there.
So how big of a sign are you wanting to put up? What are you thinking, font-wise and?
I'm thinking probably double what you have. I want you to, so you can see it, because it's not going to come along every day. And then when you...
Right. It's a heck of a conference spread. I agree. I'm not trying to discount that at all.
And I think MDOT will let you go bigger, because I've seen bigger signs than what you have out there. I'm on US 10, just to give you an idea, so, you know, MDOT's real easy, real good to work with.
So you don't have a size that you can tell us tonight that you would like to see or that you're proposing to be put up? Because we would have to be able to tell MDOT what size it is asking for and so forth. We need to be able to tell them that.
I can get that information, call you tomorrow. I just want you guys to feel comfortable if I'm...
Sure.
I support looking into this and seeing what the process is. I haven't been through anything like this as far as research in this, what we have to do to be able to do it. I definitely am not opposed to doing anything like that. We just have to see what we can do and what the process is.
I agree.
I'm not sure what exactly we can approve tonight, but I'm definitely willing to...
Invest again.
Yeah, yeah. Work into this and see what we can do.
How many, is there other five-time state champions?
No, seriously.
No, there's a reason my question. I'm not trying to discredit them or minimize them, believe me.
We found one back in the 50s. I think it was 58. We did not find any from 60 and above. And that was mainly, we looked at Class C, but I don't think there was A, B. I'm not positive of that. I can't be 100% sure, but it's very, 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 very...
I think it's great we're in right of Perry, so I'm all for it. Like I was saying, it's just the process that we have to investigate.
I just don't want it to take a year or two. Perry's not the best seller, so I just want to, I want to get this done while it's alive.
Sure. One of my questions is being opposed, I just want to make certain that we've got something in place that when we're out of round and it continues on, should somebody come along, team or individual, and want another state champion, that there's a process that automatically adds their name to it or whatever it is?
Well, I think the squirrel needs to be more involved in that.
And that's the reason I asked my question.
That's the reason why I called the school. I've been dealing with them. They need the recognition, sorry. I've got a list, I think I gave you all the state champions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, they need recognition, and they're going to do that.
Did you talk to Ms. Hume?
Did you talk to Ms. Hume, the athletic director?
Yes, yes. Yep, so she's on top of it.
Okay. Very good. Well, I think the council has indicated that they're certainly not opposed to this. But what we need to do, I think, is gather some information from you as far as what size sign you would like. And then I will contact MDOT and ask if we can do a sign at both ends or what we need to do. Can we put it on a sign that we already have, the city limit sign, or can we put a new poll up? And then you said you would pay for it.
Yes.
So I would just get hold of you and let you know
Tell me how much and I'll let you check.
What they've said, and then we'll bring it back to council once we know what's going to be allowed, and we'll do a formal resolution approving what we're allowed to do, if you get my drift there.
No problem. I appreciate you.
Council, does that sound acceptable? Any further discussion on that? Oh, I'm sorry, Jamie?
If I can, if you can.
Sure can, Jamie.
So I'm Jamie Hablink, I'm currently president of the Alumni Association, and I'm here tonight in support of the request. I'd just say a couple of things, from what I know from what's happened in the past, certain things in that. I know in years past, there was a sign on 52 indicating the sports athletic facilities. And I know at the time that was put up, I don't think permission was...
Oh, just an arrow thing?
Yeah, it was like this athletic fields down here, and it was put up. And I don't know the particulars. I don't have any proof or anything like that, but I don't think it was put up legally. And in the year that they did the highway of the 52, at that time, I know that Steve Palmer, who was the director of MDOT in that particular division, was pretty vocal about there wasn't permission and it was coming down. I don't know where the signs are now. They're probably up in the barn of the school, but they could be in the DPW barn for all I know.
Not after the tornado.
Oh, it's probably, we're 34 miles down the road now. Anyways, I know that MDOT, they were receptive, and they said any request, they needed a little written letter and so forth. As far as putting a sign up on 52 and what Bill's asking for, you know, we're in support of that, I'm in support of that. I think you'd need to go to MDOT, and I would say that when you say what size sign, I would say whatever size sign they'll allow. If they'll allow this one, this size, or this size, whatever size they would allow within reason, and there's parameters and guidelines for them to do that, I know that. The other thing is, I want to mention, is Bill reached out to me about a year ago, a little over a year ago. We've been working with the Michigan High School Athletic Association to get Harry some accolades. We were able to get the records online for the athletic association corrected and updated to reflect properly Harry's record. As far as getting him into the state association, one of the problems we've had is that the state association looks at people like, Bill and I talked about that, they looked at people like Kirk Gibson. Well, Harry's not a Kirk Gibson, but Kirk Gibson doesn't have any state championship titles to his name neither. They look at people like Brad Vampel, you know, from Owasso. God bless him, but, you know, it's pretty phenomenal what we have here. So we're in favor of the recognition, I'm in favor of the recognition, I think it should go for it. And we've even talked about something from the Alumni Association as far as the contribution they owe, but I have to take that through our board as well, so.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Yes, and we agree. Council here is all in favor of this. We're all in favor. We're just trying to clarify details and plan for the future. I would still like to know, though, what size sign you would like based on what you want it to say. I mean, are we going to just say that, that? Or are we just, I mean, to make that readable by a car driving by, it's going to have to be a whole lot bigger than that.
Probably what I would do is just Harry Bradley, five-time state champion. Doesn't have to be a lot of information.
But I think we need to recognize, like wrestling and checking field, you know what I mean? And then same thing for the other people, you know what I mean?
Same as that compared to the road sign.
I tell you what, it might be good for, I mean, you guys obviously have strong feelings about all this. Look into all this, put some thought into what, you know, you guys might want it to say, and then in the meantime, we can be kind of getting with MDOT to see what the process is, and then come back together and see what you guys got for ideas for the sign, and we'll know more about the process.
The uniform traffic control code might dictate how big of a sign they can put on a major right away or throw fair.
I imagine there's got to be a limit, but yeah.
As the DPW superintendent, I will work with the city counselors in MDOT to get something, because I feel like he's had a lot of accomplishments. He was a city employee.
Correct.
And I agree with your cause.
Thank you. Well, how about if Kevin and I work together and find out what is allowed? And then we'll get with you, I've got your number, and tell you what they'll allow, and then you can decide what you want it to say and draw it all out and let us know, and then we can get MDOT's permission before you spend your money. And then we'll just take care of the details that we need to do from this standpoint to get it approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I saw another person's hand in the bag. Did you actually have a question or are you waving at me?
I was waving at you, but I do have a comment.
Yes.
If Bill's paid for them, the bigger the better.
I'm going to water tower. You can buy the rice to put it on the water.
I just want to say, can I say something?
Yes, you may.
It's going to honor the accomplishment, which is amazing, which I was a little kid when it was happening, but my dad was always telling me, hey, you better watch this guy, you know, because this don't happen every day, you know? But it's also going to provide inspiration for younger people who are in schools, hey, it can be done, you know? This stuff can be done, and it got done here, you know? Super, I'm glad everybody's standing there supporting it. I'm very excited.
Absolutely. We're proud of him. He worked here at the city for a long time.
Yeah, his name's on that thing that has all the names on the bricks?
Yeah.
I don't think his picture's up there, is it?
No, I don't know.
His picture's upstairs. It's upstairs.
Okay, because I didn't think he would allow it to be hung up. That's why I said...
He stole the picture from somewhere, so he didn't actually like go and have it taken home, he kind of stole it.
We tried for a long time.
From a party or something upstairs, I think, so.
Well, thank you all for coming, and we'll move ahead on this. We have some paperwork to do in regard to the two resignations that we received last meeting. We need to have council accept those resignations each separately, so I'm looking for motions in regard to those.
I move that we accept with regret the resignation of the planning commission member, I think I skipped ahead one, sorry. Karen DeCarlo extended our appreciation for her service.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Mike regarding Karen DeCarlo's resignation from planning commission. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes, and now we'll back up to number five.
I move that we accept with regret the resignation of city council member Kina Dunn and extend our appreciation for her service effective the April 18th, 2024.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad regarding the resignation of council member Kina Dunn. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking for now approval that I'm going to reappoint Jennifer Porter to the Perry Building Authority. She has served on this, and I checked in with her to see if she's willing to continue that service. She said she would, so I'm looking for council approval for that.
I move that we accept the mayor's reappointment of Jennifer Porter to the Building Authority with a term expiring May of 2027.
Is that you, Jacob?
Yeah.
Motion from Larry, seconded by Jacob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now moving into the possible approval of Sasa's increase and the resolution regarding that. Any discussion from council regarding this request?
I'm sorry, do not read 2021.
I move that we approve the following resolution. Resolve that whereas on March 4th, 2024, the city of Perry created the ambulance services special assessment district in the district has subsequently been renewed, and whereas the city is required to make a redetermination of cost for the district yearly at the first city council meeting in May, and whereas the city reserved the right to increase the assessment at the time of the annual redetermination in an amount not to exceed 10% of the costs established for the prior year. Therefore, the city of Perry does determine to establish the annual ambulance services special assessment at $120 per unit. The city assessor is directed to spread the set assessment upon the city July 2024 tax roll.
Second.
We have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a possible approval of the MDOT resolution. It's for a paving grant. Do you have any questions for that or any discussion about that? Kevin is here to assist.
I was just reading, I just, if you could shed some information on that.
It's pretty standard. We have a standing agreement with Wolverine Engineering. They fill out the application or assist us in filling out the application contingent on getting funded, then they will do the engineering for the project. It basically, it doesn't mean we're going to spend more money, but instead of spending our money to do one project, we're able to do two projects. So we are able to advance our timeline up a year when we get grant funding. We've received it in the past. Hopefully, we'll get something in place for other services like our water and sewer for grant funding to do the same thing, where we'll work on a project and then apply for funding, and then if we get funded, we'll do more than what we had scheduled. So this is pretty standard. We had to do one last year, and we were denied, so it's just, it kind of recycles through applicants, so the only way to receive funding is to keep putting your hand in the ring, so to speak, so.
So it is a grant. If we don't get the grant, we don't do the work. We don't spend the money unless we get the money and a grant.
Well, we have one paving project scheduled. If we get the grant, then we can do a second paving project.
Okay.
So we just move one forward and get it done here before we have it going.
Which we approved one of the budget this year.
Yes.
Just a minute ago.
So we would take the money that's approved to spend on that project, and we would be able to do two, so we could get more bank for a buck, more project for a dollar. So they require a resolution with their application stating that we are able to spend these funds this way, so it's just part of their process.
And you do this every year?
Yes, we've done it every year that I've been here, and John started doing it years ago, and we've received funding through this before, and they did several streets at one time, resurfacing, so.
Yeah, we did Madison Street, we did Williams Street, I think Orchard Street, maybe. I mean, lots of streets have been done under this program.
Yes.
Cool. Good information. Thanks.
Any further discussion or questions for Kevin?
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the city of Perry is applying for a total of $170,852 in funding through MDOT from the Transportation Economic Development Category B program to construct resurfacing on North Watkins Street between Britton Road and Keene Street totaling $80,436, and resurfacing on West Third from Main Street through Williams Street intersection totaling $90,416. Whereas MDOT requires a formal commitment from the public agency that will be receiving these funds and will be implementing and maintaining these infrastructure projects. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city has authorized Kevin Tyler, Superintendent of Public Works, to act as agent on behalf of the city to request Transportation Economic Development Fund Category B program funding to act as the applicant's agent during the project development, and to sign a project agreement upon receipt of a funding award. Be it further resolved that the city attests to the existence of and commits to providing at least $85,426 towards the construction costs of the projects and all costs for design permit fees, administration costs, and cost overruns. Be it further resolved that the city commits to owning operating funding and implementing a maintenance program over the design life of the facilities constructed with... funding and implementing a maintenance program over the design life of the facilities constructed with Transportation Economic Development Fund Category B program funding.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. And Kevin, you can stay right there. We're gonna talk now about possible approval of the engineer slash architect quote for the DPW barn that was destroyed in the tornado.
So we're looking at options for reconstruction, which part of the budget that was just approved included funding set aside for reconstruction of a building. We were looking to do one sixty by forty, commercial grade construction, not necessarily a pole barn, it's gonna be a commercial style construction building or constructed building, so that if it has a significant wind event again, it would probably stand up better than what we had previously, which requires some preparation, engineering, and planning. Once we have some sort of print or plan in place, then we can look at getting that to contractors to bid, kinda like we did the pavilion. But it all starts somewhere, and this is the first step in that process, so we're asking for funding to have the drawings done so we can move forward and potentially replacing some of the buildings lost. It won't total, the total amount of buildings lost, but the square footage will definitely help us in storing equipment, because right now we're parking stuff outside and tarping it off, doing what we can to prolong it. Our snowplows are sitting outside, we're doing what we can with what we have, but this would go a long way in the process for the DPW to kind of put the pieces back together.
Is this covered by our insurance?
So I figured out a portion of the engineering will be covered, because one of the buildings was replacement cost value.
Okay.
So basically, the percentage of the square footage of that building, it was twenty percent of everything that was lost, so.
Thirty-eight hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Or thirty-six hundred dollars?
They agreed to pay a small portion of it based on that.
Okay.
And I might contact them again and rework it and try to figure it in as a percentage of what the new building is gonna be, as opposed to what we lost, 'cause it's quite a difference.
Okay.
So I'm looking at options and try to get as much as we can get to help us out in this process.
So as of right now, a portion of it we know would be covered, but you're gonna try to get more of it covered.
Yes.
Of this cost, okay.
How much did we actually receive from insurance for, 'cause we didn't get replacement costs, we got just whatever.
We got actual cash value on two of the buildings, and one of the buildings was replacement cost, so we have all those numbers in a file upstairs, and if you wanna stop by, we can kind of look at what we have. But we've pooled all that insurance money together, and we have, the totals were in the budget, and Megan can speak more to that, but if you wanna look at the actual cash value numbers that they paid us, 'cause they've started paying us for the stuff that they can get off of their books, which would be the old salt barn, the old DPW building, like the original building, and then the one that was replacement cost was like what we call the chipper barn, which was the smallest, had a dirt floor, a little bit of electrical, probably the least valued building, so.
My question, Kevin, would be, since we're using basically the same footprint or site that, you know, the buildings were on, I tried to wave my way through the PEA group that was in the handout, is everything that's in there something that we really need to do in light of the fact we wanna do a commercial grade building as opposed to pole barn? You know, some of those things were, I questioned whether or not they're required, given the site that we're gonna put the building on, but I'm not the expert behind it, I mean.
Right, they wanna do soil borings or testing because there was previous buildings there, and they wanna make sure that the ground is gonna be stable enough for new footings. But they have a pretty much standard process in these situations, working with cities and towns, that this is what they, they, that's kind of plug in our community with their It seemed to me like the engineering costs could really get blown out of proportion, and that they were trying to not do that for us. So I kind of feel like with the conversation I had with the PEA group is that they were only gonna do what we had to to move forward with our project. It wasn't gonna be a full-blown engineering workup for complete construction. They're trying to work with us to, and the architect, to get a plan together so that we can.
It's like they do commercial buildings, you know, shopping malls and everything else.
They're big companies.
They're a big company.
This engineer that came out and that was Kevin, he has twenty-five years' experience working in the Village of Weberville, so I think that's where he like kind of retired from. So he knows, he's a family.
You want a company that's big enough to see the large scale, but can focus on a small project like what we're.
Small enough to do what we need to have done without a lot of extras.
Right. And I felt like I relayed that to him, and he relayed it back to me, so I feel comfortable with working with them to, you know, get a plan for reconstruction.
Is this twelve-two, that's everything that's not, excluding the thirty-eight hundred dollars roughly that the insurance will reimburse us, or give us for that?
No, we didn't rework the.
I didn't rework it. Because I had already had all of this done, because he told me that.
Right.
I can never.
That's fine.
So I think it should just be, if you approve it, just the way it words, and.
And then if we get the funding, which they said shouldn't be a problem, but they didn't, you know, they didn't write us a check yet, so we should approve it as printed, and then if we get that money, we just won't use it, put it back in the budget.
Engineers always want you to do everything, good and bad at the same time. I've seen some crazy stuff, but they always wanna go to the extra, you know, oh, well, we need to, I had another building on it, so now we know those footings ain't being good. Oh, they're always very expensive.
If you remember, we had to come back during demolition and ask for more money too because of the big hunk of concrete.
Correct.
That was previously embedded in the ground there, so I feel at least we should, we should have the soil tested, if we're gonna rebuild on that location, and it seems like the best spot in relation to existing buildings and functionality, it makes the most sense to me.
Over here with the, over there, with the three, two of them are missing, or are now missing. So this is just testing, this is core samples, right, to test for soil, what the soil, if we can handle it, if it'll handle the load that they wanna put there. It's not any actual work, like.
It's on the, it's their site plan and everything.
That's site plan, they're gonna say, oh, you need to cut, fill, all that stuff, they're gonna, this is all included in this.
Yep, and then the architect is going to submit his drawings to.
PEA.
PEA, and they're gonna.
Yeah, I have some pieces, I never got to pick up my package, so it's, I'm very unprepared at this meeting.
They need to gather what they're using on another building.
Construction monitoring and material testing, construction staking, stormwater operator services, all this is stuff they can do up in my class, I'm sorry. I'm really not familiar.
That's, that is.
Sorry about that.
They're very capable, I don't, I've never worked with them directly, but they're a big company. I've seen them around on some of the stuff that we've worked with, so.
I think it's kind of nice to have a big company with lots of experts.
Nothing wrong with it.
Out of letterhead, but to have somebody who's coming from a smaller town like Weberville with a background of working there and understanding our limitations, I think that's an advantage, certainly.
And he is local, he's not city of Perry resident, but he's a Perry resident, so he can, he can stop by anytime, probably at a whim if we need him, but although if you might not want to.
What's the difference, what's the difference then, the twelve-two had site planning for forty-five hundred, but then second, like right below that, we're gonna also pay Rourke for four thousand?
That's for the architect?
He's actually designing the building.
Okay, so this, this twelve-two.
These guys do all the engineering, he and.
Twelve-two, does that get you building design?
So that's just any ground, several mechanical, electrical plumbing, and then Rourke is doing just the construction.
Doing the big prints.
He's doing the big prints. For the building, yeah.
Which they probably overlap a little bit, because the architect can say this building is, you know, has an engineering of this, but then they're doing all the stuff, the stuff underground that we're paying for, you never see.
Yeah.
And they're gonna do elevations, they're gonna do all of this stuff that's committed for that.
The part of the new structure, I'm trying to incorporate salt storage in, so we can get it out of the old damaged barn and either rehab it or tear it down, whatever is more feasible for the city. So with heavier duty footings and the ability to store salt and tons and tons of salt and pushing with tobacco and stuff was one of my concerns. Are we gonna build a substantial enough building with the proper barriers to sustain that type of weight in fifty years of use? We got one shot to do it the right way, and.
The only problem, see, it's a good thought and a good plan, probably as you store salt in a commercial steel building, I'm assuming they're probably gonna design a steel girder, building up and structures, so just the atmosphere through the salt will rust everything to death.
It, they've taken into consideration that aspect of it, and that end of the building is gonna be designed potentially different and sealed up from.
Okay, all right, so they're, you told them I wanna do this, and they said, okay, we can do, we can do these provisions or protections for that.
Right, so that may be covering all of the building materials with treated lumber in between a barrier, some sort of vapor barrier or physical barrier, so that the salt doesn't contact and ruin the integrity of the building.
Why are we trying to do a salt barn, if the salt barn's still existing, why are we trying to do a salt barn with the rest of the other barn we built?
The salt barn was damaged to a point that it's a total loss, but we've patched the roof to get us through the winter.
Okay.
In hopes of creating some other situation where we can incorporate salt storage.
Yeah.
So that's how we got where we are now.
The salt barn was kind of moved off of its foundation a little bit.
Okay.
The roof was a hole in it, but we patched it together because it had valuable salt in it, and we needed to have it available for winter, so it can't be maintained that way for long.
When talking to the insurance company and the adjuster, they're gonna pay us the total loss amount for that building, and it's up to us what we do with it. They said you can keep it or tear it down, but it can't go back on the books until it's brought back up to code, which three-quarters of that building is built out of concrete poured walls, like you would do for a home basement, and wasn't sustainable for, like I talked about, the pushing of the salt, so the back wall, the concrete is compromised.
It blew through?
Yes. It's still intact, and it's still reinforced, it's just it's cracked and it's bowling out, and it's not in the best shape. And based on years of use and the storm damage, it was determined that you cannot rebuild or fix what's there. So that's how we come to this plan, with moving the salt out, and then if there's a way to fix that building, we will try to do that and salvage it and try to get it back on the books. If it's beyond repair, then we will cut bait, let it go.
So if I incorporate the new design though, they're not gonna say, well, that's rehabbing the salt barn or anything like that, so?
No, I think the only way to save it would be to cut the concrete wall out of the back and do it like a traditional framing, and then reattach the rafters and move the roof and all that, so.
If you didn't put the salt in the new building, in that footprint, would that give you approximately the same square footage we lost, or more?
No. I have the totals on my desk, I don't have them with me, but there was a lot of square footage there in the old buildings that we would still be losing, so.
You'd still be short?
Yes.
So then my reason for asking is, couldn't we do, and it'd be hard, I know they're hard to insure, so just hear me through, make a salt bin, like us commercial landscapers do, especially on a concrete block, and then you buy, you have the hoops that are covered with canvas, they last twenty-five, thirty, forty years, and they're not gonna withstand a tornado, but that, not to take up the space of the new building and that things, I don't know if you've looked into that or even entertained that idea at all, it's just a thought.
I haven't, we can look into other options for salt storage, if that's the route council wants to go. My plan was just to, because we can do it with this build, to get it going and then move it, and even still, if you build it rated for salt, then you have other options you could do with that, you could store their aggregates in there, you could store patch in there, you could store, there'd be other options, you wouldn't necessarily have to keep the salt in there.
Correct. Do you typically not store salt throughout the year? I mean, this year was a weird year, so this is anomaly, I mean, it is what we normally would use anywhere.
Whatever we have reserved at the end of the season, we keep on hand until it's time to reorder, and we can almost store with the capacity that we have now enough salt for a winter season.
How many, approximately how many tons is that?
So there's probably a little under a hundred.
Okay, so two trains, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. That's really, that's all we use? I use more than that, one snow on the wall.
The thing that requires the most salting is the parking lots, because of the surface area, the way we maintain the roads doesn't require, you know, if we had to do fifty-two or Lansing Road.
Right, then it would be.
If you continue salting, you burn through it like crazy, but we, I mean, we use as little as possible to make it work and keep the roads safely passable.
I would like to, I think this, there's nothing to do about this, but I would like you to try to at least entertain making a separate salt storage, 'cause we don't use a hundred tons, it's not very much, honestly. You'd have to see the salt dome I have, we have six hundred and fifty tonnen right now. So those things are pretty economically feasible, I don't know if we can afford it, I'm not saying any other, just look into it for me.
I mean, we gotta look at our zoning ordinances, and we gotta play by the same rules with temporary structures.
As everybody else, that's right.
Stuff like that, too, so that's something to consider. We don't wanna look at like a tart village out there, you know, with the plastic roof and all that stuff.
I'll send you what I'm thinking of, just so you have an idea, that's all. And let's exhaust it or look into it, 'cause I, even though they claim they're gonna make divisions, salt is so caustic.
I'm in, yeah, I'm in commercial HVAC, and I do engineer plans every day, Monday to Friday, and soon as you start putting something caustic in it, it, I mean, everything you have to follow for code, ventilation, it all skyrockets.
Right.
So. You're welcome to stop by and see the existing structure too, and what the salt has done.
Oh, no, I.
It's generally.
Exactly, it's a tar.
There's a tell it's in there. Honestly, the building, the roof.
But it's a wood structure.
It is, with the metal roofing, and the concrete, which has rebar reinforcement in it, I mean, it's not popping the concrete off, it's kept, the moisture level is kept to a minimum, when you can put it in a building and close the door, it really doesn't aerosolize as much as everyone's thinking, like your power wash, and you know, the water, the moisture's in the air, and the salt's in the air, and the patcher is parked in, because based on space and availability, the patcher's been parked in that building for more than two decades, you know, and it's not rotted out.
You don't see any extra, or abundance of salt, or rust on it?
No.
Okay.
No, so if, I'm just trying to look at options too, and this was the plan that I kind of come up with, and that's why we brought it to you guys. We can revisit and start over and look at other options for salt storage, if that's what you want us to do, so.
I'm not, I'm not trying to dismiss your plan, I think it's a good plan, I'm just to see if we can have, our cake and eat it too, so maybe we don't need to put salt in the new building, we can have another area.
Sure.
I think we can work on the ordinance for a salt structure for the city, 'cause I don't think any residents, I'm not gonna pull one. 'cause I don't think any residents, I'm not gonna put one in my driveway.
Right.
That's all.
Okay, I'll look into that information and hopefully come up with some sort of plan for that.
I mean, the quote we're approving, I mean, that, it just starts the discussion, right, so it's not like we're saying we're doing one building and that's absolute, right, it's, they're gonna review...
I think if we wanted to change it, it would require new drawings and more engineering, which would further extend the amount that we're paying for that service.
Well, they haven't done anything yet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You're just approving that to, right, you're just approving it so they can move ahead and come out and do their aboring and do their, you know, their elevation.
Right, analysis is what they're gonna do first.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so like we're having a lot of discussion about how the building should be constructed, but we don't have to decide that tonight.
Right, and he can, he can change his building with the architect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would support, I mean, I would support looking at an alternative way to store the salt, and to support Bob's comments, and if it doesn't work out to be the best plan, we'll go with the single building, but what at least owe it to ourselves and the community to look at a separate storage stand-alone for the salt.
But what Kevin is thinking is his storage building is gonna have a closed door, just like it does now, right?
Right.
Your building has an open wide, it doesn't have a door that closes, right?
You can close it off, but no, typically it's open on one end.
Right.
One end's closed for sure, the other one has a door that's gonna be closed during season or winter, yeah, it's a canvas, you can put them on, there's all kinds of different ways to do it.
Do you have trouble with security at all, with kids getting into your salt? Why?
Why?
Yeah.
I've never had that problem.
No, that's what I'm just asking.
Honestly, I've never had, anywhere, but we also, where I work now, we have, you know, a six-foot fence mostly around it, we have more problems with people, we have more problems with people cutting catalytic converters off and stealing, those kinds of things, so...
Yeah, I would be concerned with a building that's open or at least very easy to get into, because we have kids, when, after the tornado, we had kids up there going through stuff all the time.
Running around and stuff.
Yeah, I would keep that in mind, I mean, this option's much more secure.
Again, it's just an idea, it's great, you did, it's a great idea, don't, I'm not trying to minimize your idea, I just, is there another way to utilize the space, 'cause we're not even replacing all the space we lost?
Right, yeah.
Is there a way to utilize that good new space without putting salt in it?
It's gonna drive the cost of construction up.
Yeah.
So you're gonna get X because it's at a mall, if you take it out, it's gonna be more reasonable, or maybe we can get other wish list items or more storage space. In my, what I do Monday to Friday, a lot of times owners come to me and they say, "I want X," and as soon as you say, "Well, what's in X," things start to conversate and you say, "Okay, that's gonna be a lot more expensive if you want all of these things," but if you say, "We're gonna put salt somewhere else," well now all the provisions on structural and ventilation and those things kinda fade away, and it's more feasible in terms of cost, so that's where my head was at when we were talking about putting salt indoors, that's all.
Kevin, do you think having that conversation with the representative from the PEA group would be beneficial? He might have some...
He might have some insight based on whether the communities are doing. I don't know of any communities that have done a salt storage building recently to look at what they went through or what they ended up doing. Standalone salt buildings that I'm familiar with, like a drive-by one every day on my way home, which is out here at the county, and they have other facilities attached to the end of it, that they have the bathrooms, some office space.
Out here on Lansing Road, yeah.
And I think that they just make sure that it's separate.
Yeah.
And I can contact them and see what they're planning with life.
That's a county building.
Yes. My previous employer had at the end of a pole barn bay, and there was basically K-rails separating it with two-by-fours and a chimney, you know, to keep it contained. And it wasn't ideal, but it's what they had, and it wasn't really much of an issue other than it was open on the front, the rain would wash some out from time to time.
So if we approve this amount of money of twelve-thousand-two-hundred dollars for the PEA group, they're just gonna be doing some testing of the soils, testing of the area to see what can be done there?
If the site is buildable.
Yeah.
We're gonna do that either way.
And that'll have to be either way, and then the four thousand for the architects for the site building, that would be expended once you've decided which route to take, correct?
Right, we would have to hold off on the building design until we figure out what type of building we're doing, with the salt storage or without.
Okay. Any further discussion on either of these two items? Is anybody interested in making a motion under number ten?
I move that, oh, go ahead. I move that we approve the quote from PE group for surveying, engineering, and geotechnical services in the amount of twelve-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Additional extras may include meetings or other construction services at a rate of five-hundred dollars per hour and reimbursable expenses of fifty dollars. We authorize the city clerk to sign the contract.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Larry, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. If we're ready to make the motion for the architects, is anyone interested in making that motion, or do you wanna hold on to it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna say that. I move that we approve the quote from Rourke architects for site building drawings for the DPW barn rebuild in the amount of four thousand dollars. We authorize the city clerk to sign the contract.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Ted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on then to number eleven on our agenda, possible approval of asphalt patch quote. What can you tell us about this, Kevin?
We had some projects that required tearing up asphalt to do repairs, one of them was the Washington Street sewer project, so we're looking to dig out the aggregate that we replaced the asphalt with and patching with a four-inch patch for that area. We had a water main break in the Oaks, I can't remember if I went down the street, Oakwood Drive or White Oak?
White Oak.
White Oak, yeah. So there was a cutout there where we backed out during a water main break to do a repair, we'd like to replace the asphalt there, and then last winter, there was one on Blue Oak Court that we left gravel for a year, because the road is in such bad shape and there's not a lot of material there, the gravel was fine, but the residents don't like it, so we were looking to do a small cap on that as well, just to put it back to asphalt again. So this quote would cover all of those sections for refacing. The city would do prep work, and Smith Baving will do the painting, for a total cost of five-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
I move that we approve the quote from Smith Baving in the amount of five-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty dollars for asphalt patches and peri-oke subdivision, and authorize the DPW supervisor to sign the contract.
Second.
Can you just add Washington Street on here too?
Add Washington Street.
Second amendment.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
I agree.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a discussion regarding the M-52 property. This is in regard to that piece of property that the city owns, just almost at the dead end there of Ellsworth Road. We had it on the market for sale after a couple of realtors gave us their opinions on value, and that basically determined that it was an unbuildable piece of ground because it doesn't have city services, it would require private well septic, and it's not big enough to have a building envelope, two septic field options and a well. So it's non-buildable piece that would have value perhaps to a neighbor, and one of the neighbors, Mr. Mosher, did indicate at that time that he'd be interested in purchasing it from us. We did never put a purchase agreement together though in writing because there had to be some preliminary work that the Shawasi County Health Department required as far as a well that's on site. So Mr. Mosher told me that he would talk to them, he would find out what he needed to do, and I have been trying to reach him by phone since October. I understood that perhaps he was gone for the winter to warmer climate. I asked John, who is a little familiar with him, John Souter from the DPW, to talk to him if he saw him, if he saw him there, stop, you know, and he said he would do that, he has not been able to make any contact with him either, I've left multiple voicemail messages and he's not returned any of them. My assumption at this point in time is that he doesn't wanna buy it. So I had to meet with Justin, our attorney, last week regarding a few things, so I talked to him about this, because I have concerns, because Mr. Mosher has been parking his big semi-truck on that parcel, not without permission though, because he said to me, "Since I'm gonna buy this, can I park the truck there?" I said, "Yes, I don't see any problem with that," but if he's not gonna buy it, he needs to move the truck. So Justin's gonna send him a letter indicating to him just that, that if he's not gonna buy it, he needs to move the truck, he does not have permission to have his truck there, and so forth. So now, getting past all those little things, the question is, do you wanna try putting this back on the market? It's only got value, maybe somebody could buy it to put a vegetable stand on, I mean, I'm not saying they couldn't do that. But as far as a building, that would be, had to have to go through, jump through the hoops that Shawasi County Health Department would require, and they're significant, there's a well on site that they'd either have to fill and cap or test and show that it's potable. I just don't know, that the amount of money that it would be worth to anybody is way less than what the city paid for it, but...
How big is the property?
It's just under an acre, it's a real strange shape, it's close to a Pentagon but not really, it's got a real strange angle to its shape. So if you wanna think about it, and we can put it on the agenda again for next time to come to a conclusion, put it on the market or just let it sit.
Is there any downside to put it on the market? I mean, it doesn't cost the city anything.
No, I don't see any downside to putting it on the market, we just need to come up with an asking price.
What did we pay for it?
I think it was nineteen thousand dollars. It was a tax sale, if I remember right, it was purchased before I became mayor, so, but I have the file, I have the information. The agreement that we had with Mr. Mosher was for four thousand dollars, and that was the only offer that we got. We did get some inquiries when it was on the market before, and information, copies of surveys, information from the Health Department was all sent out, but once they saw all that or talked to the Health Department, they didn't have any interest.
Is it zone residential, commercial, mixed use?
You know, I think it's mixed use, but I'd have to, it's been so long since I've looked at that file.
I do, but...
It used to have a house on it, Jacob, it used to have a house on it, so at one point it was residential, but it's right next door to a business, so, and the other side is a house.
I think it was originally purchased for, to look at wellfield development.
That's right, that's why the city originally bought it, yeah.
And it was the, there was a better option, so...
There was a cloud on the title. When we decided to put it on the market, I asked Justin to run a clear title search on it, and there was a cloud on the title where there was a past owner who we signed off, and it took just about nine months to get that clear, so that kinda delayed things for a bit, but that is now clear, so...
We as a city don't have any vision for using it, I don't think we do, I'm aware of, are you, Kevin?
They secured the new wellfield across the road on Ellsworth Road from the current wellfield entry facility, so it would be out of the way, and I don't think there's enough protected area around it to do a wellhead protection area, so I don't, from a water development standpoint, no.
This is the, this is the shape of that, Jacob, you ask?
I can't see it up. All right, I'm just interested, interested to hear you.
When we had it on the market before, we had it at eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars, and we, you know, shared that the well on site would need to be evaluated by Shawasi County Health Department. We had indicated about the cloud on the title, but that's been cleared, so we wouldn't have to dispose that. Shirley just found a resolution in her file that says that the city approved spending ten-thousand-six-seventy-four-one for it, and that was in 2015, and that was on a tax sale from the state of Michigan. So no, Larry, to answer your question, I don't, I don't see any downside to just putting it back on the market.
I would say...
I mean, we could just put it on the market ourselves, putting it on the website, putting a for-sale sign back on there, do we have that or did that blow away?
It was destroyed, I don't know, the car ran it over or somebody did it with mowing equipment, I don't know what happened to it, but we have to purchase a new one.
It probably wouldn't.
So we put it back on the market for the eight-five that we were asking before?
I, yeah, that's what we were asking before, I mean, we didn't get any offers, so my real estate background would tell me that it was grossly overpriced. If you've got something on the, on the market for a certain price, you don't get any offers, you're overpriced, either that or it's...
I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, no, that's, it's a good question.
When was Justin gonna send them a letter?
I don't have a date.
Okay.
He just told me he would send them a letter, I haven't seen it yet, and I would presume he would send it to me before it's mailed, so I haven't seen it.
I'm fine with putting it back on the market, but I would, I would like to get a answer or some sort of response from the Moschers if they want it or not.
So would I.
Before we throw it back on the market, because it's not as good cost as they put it on the market, but it's...
We could send a letter and give them a couple weeks or something.
Yeah.
I left them voicemail, and the last voicemail, I said, "If you're not interested, we will put it back on the market."
Right.
And Justin's letter, I think, would also indicate that.
Indicate that, right.
So once the letter goes out, I guess, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and he's still free to put it out.
We put it on the next, next agenda with a motion to, we haven't heard back the next meeting.
Then we'll put it on the market.
We'll put it on the market.
We can buy a for-sale sign for ten dollars probably, put it out there.
We had one from the hardware store there previously with the city phone number on it, so...
I think that'd be the cheapest way and the fastest way to do it, you might return calls on that alone, 'cause I had a conversation with him too before we put it on the market, he was, he was interested.
Boy, yeah, he told me he wanted to buy it. He flat out said, "I wanna buy it, I'll pay this much, I'll pay the closing costs, I'll do this, I'll do that." So Shirley, would you put this on the agenda for the next meeting, please? We'll discuss, hopefully I'll have a letter from Justin by then, and... Okay, then we are down to any other business that may come before council, and I do have something I'd like to talk about. And I do have something I'd like to talk about. I sent you all in an email copies of a grant application that was submitted to Congresswoman Slotkin's office by Perry Township Supervisor Mark Folks. I believe he had a grant writer prepare that, just from the way it's worded, it's my assumption. I haven't talked to him. There's information in there that is, I don't believe completely accurate from firsthand knowledge. He's indicated, they've indicated in the application that their proposal now, instead of doing the water line extension, the water tower and the new well, would be just to run the water line extension out into Perry Township, just do that. And that's what they're asking for in that grant application. But Mr. Folks did not ask Kevin or me. I mean, I would know, I would have had to ask Kevin, but he didn't ask, would that work? Does the city have the capacity to make that work? And I sent all that stuff to Kevin and he's made an inquiry. Have you found anything out yet?
I have not heard back. So Wolverine Engineering is working on our engineering and planning documents for the water reliability study. And there's a water model incorporated with that which would, there's a lot of mathematical equations that determine the capacity, the, what our water tower can sustain as far as expansion. We may run into a situation where if they approve the funding for the water line expansion, that maybe we could move forward with the installation of the water lines, but not necessarily hook them up until, I've, I've looked into the history of this planning a little bit. There's a file at the DPW in regards to this. And with the complete plan in place, which has been denied for years, with the, the expansion of the water line, adding an additional water tower, adding the well and adding to the treatment plot process would increase the capacity enough to sustain not only running the water line into the township, but also being able to make connections to it regarding fire suppression and consumption. So I asked Wolverine Engineering if, if we just were capable of doing the water line expansion on its own. And I'm guessing that it's, it's not going to be sustainable for us right now. I would hate to turn away grant funding, so that will dictate where we move forward. I have not talked to Eagle, our state engineer, on this matter. I was unaware that we were this far along in the process, up until I received the email. So when I have the numbers and information from Wolverine, I will contact the state. The application process might take longer based on, they'll have to do the facts and figures as well. So that's kind of where we sit with this. You have to have all your ducks in a row to move forward with a project like this and we don't even have ducks yet. So, the mayor and I, the mayor and I have been talking a little bit about this and that's, that's my experience and feelings on this. So when I know more information, I will pass that information along to council and then we'll determine if it's feasible, not feasible, if it's a good opportunity for us. So that's where we sit on that as of today.
As far as future, when Kevin and I were talking, and at one point in time, probably a couple of years ago, Larry said, "What's the benefit to the city if we do this?" And Kevin had some insight into that. Do you want to share that with council? If we're able to move ahead.
There would be some benefit for Perry residents. Typically, communities draft an agreement with a neighboring community if they supply them resources. That, what I've seen in the past is, is you double the rate. So the tapping fees or the ready to serve rate is double. The water rate is double outside the city. Those people have to pay for those good services. So it might help put funding in our water accounts that we can use to forward community water projects within the city. So having more money to do more projects is, is good for, for Perry residents. And then the township would also benefit from being able to offer those services to potential investors. And fire hydrants and, you know, all the, the good things that go along with fire suppression and stuff like that. So not opposed to it. We just have to make sure we're doing it the right way, so.
Thank you, Kevin. If you had a chance to read through this, you, I'm sure you saw that the township, or at least this grant application, has indicated that the township is willing to pay a twenty percent match, which is a typical requirement, which is not an amount to be sneezed at. It's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If it's an eighty-twenty, in the first application that the city did before I became mayor, it was going to be ten percent paid by the township, ten percent paid by the city. But in subsequent conversations with the SEDP and with Mark Folks, I said to them, "We have no money for this. We don't have the ten percent." They did go ahead and submit a second application, but it was denied because the city did not have their ten percent, nor did we have our master plan done. So moving ahead with the master plan, that's almost finished, but we still don't have that kind of money to put in for a match. But at a twenty percent match, Perry Township is, as in the application, is prepared to pay that. In the reply that was copied to me from Congresswoman Slotkin's office, they said, "This grant is not a twenty percent match. It's a twenty-five percent match. Are you prepared to pay twenty-five percent?" And that just came today. So I have not seen any indication from Supervisor Folks as to whether that's available or not. We did have Brent Jones from the SEDP in Owasso submit an application, and I shared this with you folks, to Senator Peters' office for a grant to cover this. But they replied to me and said, "Do you have the match money?" And I said, "No, we don't." I did email Mark Folks, because they gave me like three days to get the answers to the questions they had. And I emailed him three times, asking him, "Do you have the money?" "We don't have the money." So, because it's submitted for a joint project, city township. So I finally had to reply and say, "No, we, we don't have the money." And they asked some other questions that I had to ask of Kevin about whether this project was.
On the state revolving loan.
There you go. Thank you, yeah.
If it was going to be funded another way. And I did some research and figured that, we didn't apply. So you have to be a water system in order to apply, so the township couldn't apply for those funds. They just don't have information, so.
So anyway, they denied us. Senator Peters' office said, "At this time, you do not qualify for this grant." Well, Mr. Folks sent an email, because I was copying him on all this. He sent an email to Peters' office and said, "This is not what we want. This is a loan. We don't want a loan. We want a grant." And Quentin from Peters' office sent back an email, copying everyone in big letters that said, "This is not a loan. This is a grant." In other words, "Don't tell us what our business is. We know what it is. You are wrong." And then the next thing that happened the next week was this. He never called me. He never said, "We're doing this." He never got hold of Brent, as far as I know. He just did it. I'm a little annoyed by that. I would have liked to have had some kind of meeting so that current information could have been submitted with it. I'm pleased that they're willing to pay the money, if they're willing to pay the money. So I bring this to you so that you know what I know. But I also ask, do you want to think about setting up a committee? Once again, because there was a committee before I became mayor that meets with representatives from the township and from the SEDP. Of course Kevin would need to be involved in that, and get current information. Even the prices that were submitted with this were from engineering that was done in 2019.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if it's going to be pursued, it needs to be done properly. And I don't think this was proper. But I'll be quiet now and let you guys talk. Don't you laugh.
Part of the little pieces, as you mentioned, Sue, one of your couple of meetings with you, it seemed like the number was, to do all three things, which is the water line, another well and another tower, was like, with those old numbers, like seven point two million or something like that. And by today's standards, it's probably twelve million. And if my memory's correct, if you do them in increments, you could do it, you could put the lines in and they'd set not flowing water until you do, you know, at least part B to get, you know, more well capacity.
I'm pretty sure we're going to have a capacity issue. Presenting the, the whole package, I think, was feasible because you'd have the storage, you'd have the supply and, and you'd have the customers to sustain the maintenance for that type of activity.
I think those were the biggest benefits that the city had would be a second water tower, should we have a problem. And more well capacity for the city as well as, in addition, helping the township. But it's a ten, twelve million dollar project, but I don't think you can piecemeal and have it be successful. You've got to lay out the whole thing. And maybe in, in phase one, we do this, but it needs to be understood that phase one just lays pipe and doesn't flow any water until you do phase two and maybe even phase three.
Too big a project to start handling like this.
Exactly.
Like this, not off on the right front.
I definitely have doubts in regards to this project. So all we can do is figure out how it should be developed. And then hopefully redirect their focus to whatever we need to do on our end to make it a reality on their end. Because, I mean, with well four being not at a hundred percent, I mean, we have to have a new well four. We have to add a well five. At least in the previous plan, that's the way it worked, was adding a well five, adding to the treatment process within the treatment plant, having a tower to store the water in for fire capacities and flows. If you start hooking up buildings with fire suppression, the rating has to, yeah, the rating has to sustain. If all those fire systems deploy at the same time, how long can you supply water to all those systems before your tower's empty?
Was the second tower supposed to be located out by like train fleet or something?
Somewhere along that corridor. I'm not sure exactly which probably, but I think the township has a parcel out there somewhere.
I'm not saying I don't have concerns, but I don't think that we should step away from at least having a conversation. And even if we're on the wrong foot, I don't think we can sleep well at night by not having a conversation when someone's willing to put that kind of money up for a project that really would benefit both communities.
I don't think anyone's saying that. I think it's just, this is not the way this works.
No, I'm not saying to step away from it at all. I'm just saying, this is just not the way to do it.
We need to have a good face.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Partial information.
I got misunderstood. No, you guys have not answered emails, submitting stuff without asking, "Are you guys okay with us?" None of that's okay.
I'm going to add to your system that not even asks. Is that okay?
I, I have had a, a, one meeting with Mr. Folks. I met him out at the township hall and talked to him and he said, "Is the city of Perry on board?" And I says, "Me, as the superintendent of public works, see value in this project." But I said, "We have a process at the city level that we have to do. I can't speak for, on behalf of the council or the residents or, or anybody else." Because I'm sure the public would have some opinions on this type of activity as well. I said, "This is me to you saying that, I mean, yeah, it would be good for the city of Perry." I, in no way, shape or form, said, "Fill out the application, send them in."
Right.
You know, "Let's push it through and, and ask for forgiveness." I, I would never put myself or the city council in that situation. So that's why the mayor and I mutually agreed to have a conversation on record. This is where we're at, so hopefully we can start steering this thing in the right direction. If they're willing to put forth that amount of funding, I, I wouldn't want to turn a blind eye to it.
Yeah, for sure.
But it's worth having a conversation and they maybe even have a committee, but I think like Larry said, they're, this is dropping the bucket. They're probably at ten percent on what the actual cost is going to be, if not less. Because, yeah, we can put water in there all day long, but if you can't flow water, it doesn't benefit anywhere. Doesn't benefit the city, doesn't benefit the township. It will, you know, there's lots of benefits to the city if everything goes together and then it benefits the township more because they can have the commercial buildings. Because I know that's, it would go that way. It would help the people live this way with the dead end lines.
It would benefit us too. I mean, we're already, we would need capacity to.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can see a lot of benefits for us, but.
At least initially, it's going to be.
We can't communicate work yet like that. It's just, I don't know why you thought that would work.
I, I would like to ask then council, who on council would be willing to sit on that committee or at least in that first meeting to have those discussions? And I'm happy to call Mr. Folks and set up some time to meet together with SEDP because I think they are also involved in trying to promote this because to bring business into the area, they need water. So they, they've certainly been very supportive of trying to get this done. But I, I'm happy to, let me rephrase that. I'm willing to sit on that committee. And Kevin would need to sit on that committee. If you would give consideration to doing that, at least the first meeting. Who knows? Maybe we'd have the first meeting and that would be it. But maybe we'd have the first meeting and we would need to go to a second and a third and who knows how many meetings. So if you would give consideration to serving on that committee?
I know I would just want to be on, just to be involved.
You would, Jacob? Thank you.
It's a big enough project, I think we all should know something.
I think I will be too.
Thank you, Jim. Well, I think that's good then. I'll get hold of Mr. Folks and see what kind of timeframe we can get a meeting together and get back with you guys and we'll get something put together. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Do we have any other discussions? Any other council observations to talk about?
I was going to ask a question on, not to continue on this, but in our experience with grants, when you get something like this rolling, is it easier to get phase two, phase three, phase four money when the project's already been started? Or is it usually initial funding and then that's all government will allow for that?
Oh, yeah. No, no, it, very often, yes, you can get grant after grant after grant once you qualify for your first one. But it depends on their funding.
Sure.
Because it's government money and who knows from year to year whether that's going to be available. to be available.
Right, okay.
And that was one of the discussions previously, was to potentially stage it and segment it, but it was laid out, was to be laid out as a roadmap that says, here's the total project, and in phase one, we could do this, and phase two, we do that, and phase three, and you'd have to go after, you know, successive grants, but at least the big picture was understood, not half of phase one.
And we did meet with Quentin from Peters' office in person, and another lady, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, but that discussion was held at that time too. I mean, they're, very often, the legislative grants are more flexible, it's not just a flat one-time amount of money. So, yes, typically is easier to get for next phase and the next phase.
It, it seems to me too, like the portion that, that they've applied for would most benefit the township, and supersedes our needs and abilities to be able to provide that for them.
And we're on the hook, or is it's hooked up?
But admittedly, it's a big dollar amount, it's not, you know, not belittling, you know, a grant to fix our roads or to buy a new mower or whatever, and you're talking a multimillion dollar project.
That's right.
Multi-year.
Ten, fifteen years.
Multi-year project as well, exactly.
Ten, fifteen years' credit in, from City Perry.
And what, once they've got the, the pipe laid out, connected, or whatever, what would be their motivation to continuing to apply for grant funding and funding the water tower and the, the well process? If, if they laid out that portion of it first, they would be more motivated to continue the project and not let it stall out, or, so we would need something, some sort of commitment, some sort of agreement in place.
Yes.
With them to complete the entirety of the project. That would make me feel a lot more comfortable, and I'm sure the state and everybody else involved.
Yeah, that's not just, yeah, I bet you just the engineering costs are going to be close to a million dollars. Usually you have to figure the roads, and then the wells, where, know where the well could go, but then you have to know where the tower's going to go, and how big that tower has to be.
I'm just going to ask that question.
All that, there's.
Easements, right-of-ways, permissions.
Right, all this stuff, that's.
Utility agreements, I mean, there, the sky's the limit. Not to mention the legal fees involved with developing all of these plans.
Correct. It's, I don't know why they did that, that is just.
With your opinion, would they need a water tower, is how big as we got now, to be able to?
They don't have to be bigger.
Bigger.
Yeah, it'd probably have to be five hundred thousand gallons, ours is two fifty.
In their original engineering, they did indicate a side, I don't have it right here in my hand, but, I, again, I just don't know, because it was five years ago.
Because that's kind of blown up out there.
That's unethical now.
Typically, when you look at a development of a new tower, you do what is needed plus expansion, so they would oversize it to a certain amount so that if capacity changes, you're able to just move right along.
And you don't have to build a new tower, just have to finish that one?
I've seen situations where there's stand pipes built next to towers on the same site because they needed extra capacity, and that was the easiest way to obtain it.
I, I just thought I'd bring that up, I didn't know, I mean, obviously, I knew there would probably have to be better than what we have here, but I didn't know if they already, like she said, in the plan that they had before, you know, it could have been a two hundred and fifty thousand thou, you know, thousand tower, now it's going to have to be more than that.
Before we have the meeting, I'll make sure to get the old information to you guys, so you just have the original stuff to look at. Any other agenda items for our next meeting?
We might have some ordinance stuff.
Okay.
Surely get it back from Justin.
I will ask if you'll put mayor appointments on there, I've got a couple of inquiries out and about for our empty council seat, so maybe we'll get someone by next time. Anything else?
And possibly, depending on how the master plan discussion goes, the planning commission, we may ask for some planning commission time to review and, and approve, because just to reminder, the next step needs to come to council and approve that it be made public for the sixty-two or sixty-three days for public input.
Right.
We've done a number of rewrites and, and updates in the last, since it was in here last time.
So if Perry's approve it on Monday, then you'll come back and ask for the ten-day, that's what you're saying?
Pardon?
If you approve it on Monday, the master plan, if the planning commission approves it, then you'll come back and ask for the next meeting to have it approved, or open up the ten-day.
Anything else? If not, at eight fifty-six, this meeting's adjourned.
Sorry, I need to.